Everyone's here for West Street?
Yes.
There you go. Case number 16047, West Street Properties LLC for a varied finding, removing existing two-family home, replacing with eight-town homes on the premises R264 West Street is the applicant representative here, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Edward Fleming, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Bayless of West Street Properties LLC. In addition to that, Mr. Bayless has put together a professional development team. The architectural plans were prepared by Charlie Bamberg, the site engineer Greg Tanzi of Ross Engineering completed the site plans, as well as a stormwater management plan and report that was filed with the planning board as part of the site plan review process, which is also a permitting agency regarding this matter. If I can, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go through a little bit of the background and the proposal. Well, I'm going to be essentially the agenda tonight. Bayless is here as well, but this matter has been presented to the planning board. Just by way of background, 264, or R264 West Street is a 28,000, almost 29,000 square per parcel area. It's a very large parcel land, and it's set back from West Street and is serviced by a 20-foot access right-of-way. A number of years ago, back in the 40s or 50s, this lot was created, and when it was created, the parcel out front, there was a right-of-way granted to the back lot where the house was then located. It's a large two-family house, about 5,000 square feet, about 2,500 square feet of living space. In that house, there's eight bedrooms and about four bathrooms. It's a big old house, over 100 years old, and it's very deteriorated. When Mr. Bayless bought the house, he looked at the possibility of renovating or remodeling the house, to utilize the house in some fashion. The house has six-and-a-half foot ceilings. The house is so deteriorated that it really didn't make a lot of sense to do so for the market rate residential living that he was hoping to provide. So he came up with this proposal that we're making tonight. As I indicated, Mr. Chairman, this matter has also been filed with the zoning board appeals. I mean, with the planning board, the planning board has site plan review authority and approval over this project, and that has been instituted and underway. We had our initial hearing with the planning board, at which time a number of neighbors appeared and raised concerns and questions, as well as some questions were raised by the planning department, and the matter was continued now twice, for the purpose it will be appearing again before the planning board tomorrow night. During that time, we've been working through all of the issues and comments that have been raised by the city's departments, both the DPW Department, Health Department, Fire Department, and most importantly, issues related that were raised by Woodard and Curran. Woodard and Curran was hired by the city as an independent peer review consultant to review the project, and they reviewed all aspects of the project, questions that were raised by the neighbors, questions that were raised by the city departments, including matters related to site circulation, drainage, and those matters. And Woodard and Curran just on, I think, the 6th of this month issued a final approval letter, and that letter has been provided to the planning board indicating that the applicant has met all of the comments and questions that were raised and responded to those appropriately, so that the matter is appropriately...
All drained on-site?
All drained and managed on-site. So let me just walk through, if I may, just the proposal and its terms. So Mr. Bayless is seeking to remove the existing deteriorated large home and replace it with eight townhouse-style units. Those units will be located in three different buildings. One building on the left of the site, as you come in the driveway, which will consist of four units, and then two additional two-unit buildings on the right side of the site, with driveway and access to garages through the middle of the site. The townhouses will be three stories in height, they'll have mansard-style roofs to keep the height down. An interesting aspect of this site is that it's essentially carved out in the middle of the site, where the residential properties on Wesson, I think it's Wesson Ave, to the right, are up higher, and properties in the rear are also elevated. This site will be essentially carved out so that the buildings that are built on the site will sit into the lower area of the property in the site, and that's shown in more detail on the topography plan that I have here tonight as well. Each of these units, as I indicated, will be three stories of height, because under the buildings on the first floor will be provided two-car parking in a garage setting. In addition to the two cars that we provided per unit, there's additional five additional visitor parking spaces that are laid out on the site as well. So what that results in is 2.6 spaces per unit, far in excess of what the ordinance requires, and really taking into consideration the concerns and questions that the neighbors raised, to ensure that there's enough parking on this site, that there will not be overflow parking related to the concerns you raised.
And there's still parking in front of the garage, too.
And there's still parking in front of the garage, although the hope would be that the parking, existing laid-out parking will be plenty.
People coming over, they could even pour it.
Absolutely, and there's actually a carved-out area that was left on the site, created on the site, in the middle of the site. It's located right in here, where we indicate no parking. The purpose of that really is to allow a fire apparatus to come into the site and then turn around and leave the site going forward. And that area can be used, although we're going to try to discourage parking there long-term, it can be used for short-term visitor parking as well, so you have additional parking spaces there. But we have these five line spaces, as well as the garage spaces. And that was really, and the parking that's provided on this proposal was done specifically to respond to concerns that the neighbors raised, about making sure there's enough parking for this particular proposal. So we think that we did so here. And that brings me to the point that when we initially had a neighborhood meeting on this proposal, Mr. Bayless was proposing 11 townhouse units. We had a great neighborhood meeting that was hosted by Brian Kambuchin, city councillor. A number of these neighbors that are here tonight were there as well, and they raised concerns about density, they raised concerns about parking, they raised concerns about landscaping and other matters, all of which we believe we took into heart before we even filed this matter, before the zoning board and before the planning board, by reducing it from 11 to eight units, by creating more parking on the site, by changing the layout of the site that allowed for additional landscaping. There was comments raised by neighbors saying, "Well, if I look down the driveway, what am I going to see?" And so this landscape strip in the front here was created, so that when you look down, where you now see cars parked in the, haphazardly parked in the parking, or in the driveway for the house, now you'll see landscaping that will actually, you know, hide some of the units, certainly the larger four-unit building. And there's additional landscaping here as well. So those types of matters were really done specifically in response to concerns that were raised by the neighbors. Other concerns, and I know a neighbor raised a concern about runoff, and we started talking about that briefly, but runoff right now simply runs down the driveway uncontrollably and runs into the street. Well, now the runoff is going to be controlled on-site with a modern stormwater management system, all of which has been reviewed by Woodard and Curran, commented on pretty substantially, and approved by Woodard and Curran. So again, we feel like we've...
Because they, it's the driveway alone, so it all runs into anything that the driveway system has been through?
Yeah, we created it as a swale, there's also landscaping strip that will be created on both sides, where water will be directed into those areas, there's a catch basin provided throughout the site that will prevent a lot of the water from running off the site initially. All the roof drains and things of that nature will be controlled and dealt with in that way. The other, and I think one of the more important concerns that were raised by the neighbors, was also that there would be a conflict in the vehicles leaving and going to the property, because if the driveway wasn't sufficient, they believed, to adequately, to provide sufficient width for the cars to park. So on this plan, we created a highlighted of that particular driveway. What the neighbors see now is not what will be there when the property's developed, what they see now is probably about a 12-foot driveway that services only the house. The right, the access right-of-way is actually a 20-foot access way that allows the applicant to expand that driveway to 20 feet, and we showed on this diagram that two cars can easily pass each other, so that it would not require cars to back up onto the street, which is a comment that the neighbors made during their earlier presentation.
Rightfully so, when you see it now.
Absolutely. And what's also not clear to the eye either is that this site is a 29,000 square foot site. It goes back very deeply into the site. In fact, this site's only going to be developed to this area, and there's still another 55 or 54 feet behind that, that's all wooded.
A lot of those trees are going to stay?
Right. And many of the, in fact, there was a letter issued by Chris Cassani today from the Park Department, because we met with him on the site, and all the trees that are going to be removed from this area are all scrub trees, and I can show you a copy of his letter indicating that really he believes that the new landscaping, the new trees that will be planted will be much better than what's there today, and all the mature trees in the back will remain unaffected.
That's why I was looking at the back, there's those big, big trees back there. How many are going to take out?
So the, what's being requested today by way of relief is, I actually requested a finding, because of the non-conforming law as it sits today, but I also requested dimensional variances to allow for the buildings to be set back in the fashion they are, and the lot size per dwelling unit, and the FAR. And I want to comment on that really quickly, because there's concerns that were raised by the neighbors, that this is a very dense, overdevelopment, there's too much development in the city. But this site, this proposal is not dense, and it's certainly not dense compared to other proposals that have been before this board. What this proposal provides for is 3,551 square feet of land area per dwelling unit, significantly more than a lot of other proposals that have been made before the city, and in addition to that, the 2.6 spaces per unit. So by way of example, other, you know, there's some comments made by the neighbors that, oh, well, this is a single-family neighborhood, this is a low, small residential neighborhood, and that's true to some extent. But what also exists in this particular neighborhood is 268 West Street, which is next door, is a 10-unit building. The 12,000 square foot lot provides for 1,297 square feet per dwelling unit. 25 Schleger Avenue, which is a building behind this site on Shunsford West Street, is a 12-unit building on a 38,000 square foot site, which provides 3,195 square feet per unit, still less than this proposal does. 96 West Street, which is a five-unit townhouse development, which this board was probably party to and reviewed, which was permitted right on the corner of Wesson Sullivan, I think it is, provides a five-unit condominium, 2,080 square feet per unit. And then 18 Bates Avenue, which is not this neighborhood, but it's in the West Quincy neighborhood, a five-unit development, which is 1,790 square feet per unit. Now, I can probably tell you 100 proposals that have happened in the downtown, and I know the downtown's different than this neighborhood, but there's all the dense development. But this proposal really provides a lot of land area per dwelling unit, and a lot more than I think even the neighbors understand by looking at the site as it exists today. We really believe that this proposal, unlike other things that could be provided on the site, or could be sought on the site, like an apartment building, like the one slash Schleger building, or the West Street building, it fits much better into the neighborhood. It's much more residential in character, it's going to provide for individual ownership of these units. These aren't apartments, the condominiums are going to be owned and people are going to invest in the neighborhood, and they're going to share the same concerns that the neighbors have about maintenance of their roadway in this area and the character of their street. This provides a significant amount of landscaping, as I indicated, and parking. 20-foot right-of-way provides for more than adequate access, not only for the two vehicles to pass, but also for the fire department to gain access to the site. We've spoken with the fire department, we're comfortable that they are comfortable with access to the site. And lastly, it provides for significant new investment to the area. This property has really become pretty tired. It's not a, it's not an attractive property, it doesn't improve the property values for the neighbors. This property, we believe, will, it will fit into the community, and it will really improve the quality of that area.
All roofs on there, all for as well?
All roofs, yes. And they're showing a little better on the renderings as well.
Brings the height down.
And it brings the height down, yeah, so that there's really a low pitch on that roof. So that's the applicant's presentation, we're certainly going to answer any questions or respond to any comments and concerns that the neighbors have. I hope that the neighbors would consider the things that Mr. Bayless has done since he initially met with us.
On the drainage, drainage, can you explain what we have on site with drainage?
There's nothing, there's no controls today.
No, there's zero, not, I know, it's going to be there, that we, of course, I know there's nothing there now, it all flows down. How many, what do you have, the tanks there, we have...
This is what my engineer was doing.
You know, you have to dig them down some?
Seven. Just really, really quickly, this highlights the topography.
Can we just kind of look at the...
Yeah, sure.
That'd be great.
That's how this is the topography, as you can see, this area here is almost carved out in the middle, where it sits down lower, and the topography really goes from, for example, it goes from 126 up to 141. So there's significant change in elevation, where the homes on this street here, which are residential homes, single-family residential homes are higher, that this is going to really something down. So that provides you a little better feeling for how the site is. So this shows the drainage. We have the chambers located not only in the middle of the site, but also in this area where the additional parking would be, and the swale, they'll...
So that's all underneath the other parking, too?
So this will be provided underneath the parking. And again, all the calculations were reviewed by Woodard and Curran, showing it here.
And what are they doing on the driveway? They changing any pitch on the driveway at all?
It's pitched to be picked up in the swale, I believe, where there's a six-inch, this is the six-inch water main, but there's also a swale that will pick up the water that runs off the driveway. And that was a concern, I think, raised by a neighbor down the bottom of the hill, on the bottom of the driveway, to make sure that the water wouldn't impact him. And again, he doesn't have to believe that I'm telling the truth, or that our engineers are telling the truth, it's been reviewed by the city's...
Oh, you had a planning board, plus you had the independent review that came back. And I thought it was 12 units at first, I didn't know it was 11, but I thought it was moved down.
Yeah, and then they just made that clear to Mr. Bayless, one last neighborhood meeting. We had a nice, tranquil meeting, it was very fruitful, I thought, and he was given pretty clear direction as to where they wanted it to go, and quite frankly, when he came back with eight units, we really, I really felt that he had gone, gotten to that point, that he'd get support from the...
We keeping everything on-site, real boy, for the people down, I mean, that stuff comes down there, it must just flow out of there crazy right now.
Yeah.
I mean, everything on-site.
Uncontrolled, untreated, untreated, yeah.
Any questions?
Not at this time.
Do you have any?
No.
Thank you, councillor. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Speak in favor. First of all, can I pull up your name and address to the record, please?
Frank Ford, 28 Wesson Avenue. I'm a father, I'm actually, I look up on my back porch, and there it is, what they did. And when the ladies died, I told my wife, I said, "Someday this is going to be built", and sure enough, it is. But I talked to Mr. Bayless, and I saw another project that he worked with, and it came out really nice, and like the councillor said, he reduced the ridgeline, we're up higher, and it's in a valley, and he knocked it down to eight units. And I don't think it's really going to affect me, because of my, myself, my side of the street, because I'm up higher, and I think there's going to be some greenery in there. And when he knocked down the ridgeline down there, so it's, you're not going to really see much if you see it, you know. With the time, yeah, you're going to see something probably, but I'm totally in favor of that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else speaking in favor?
Ernie, I'm ready.
It's kind of like times to the cool, right, Ernie?
I know, a little cool, I got 30 sprinkles. I'm in favor of this project, I think it's going to be an asset to the neighborhood over there, from what's there right now. The biggest part of it is going to be all off-street, you know, it's all in the back, it's off-street, you've got plenty of parking back there. The traffic on the street, I have heard in the past, well, the traffic and everything, I travel West Street probably half dozen to a dozen times a day, and the traffic isn't as bad as what's set up there. The worst I've ever seen it was a week and a half ago, when the city, we had the street dug up, and they had blockages there and everything. But I think that what's there right now, this project is going to enhance the property all around it, and I'm in favor of this project.
Thank you. Anyone else? You want to speak in favor?
I do. Good evening, my name is Michael Weber, I live at 1 Bearson Ave, which is at the top of Wesson Ave. I approve this, I think it'll, if anything, it's going to be better for the neighborhood, and I hope so, sir.
Thank you. Coffee, you're in favor?
No, but I like to speak, so. Good evening, members of the board, I see, almost high optional. My name is Brian Kambuchin, the city councillor, I have the pleasure of representing Ward Four. Take my comments as they're delivered, rather than as where they come in the placement. We've got, you know, I felt like I had to be here, because I, you know, I try and get your attention, I send you letters about unicorns, nobody writes back.
Oh, I spoke about unicorns last meeting.
Right, that's what I mean. So I just wanted to, as I typically do when I appear before you, I want to tell you what I did in terms of notification for folks, so that they knew about this meeting, knew about the project in general. And I think this is the first time it's on your agenda, but it's been pending in the planning board, in front of the planning board for quite some time, and the project itself has been kicking around for a bit of time. As it relates to this particular meeting, I sent out notifications to residents on June 20th by letter, approximately 500 area residents, telling them about this hearing, encouraging them to come up, offer their opinion, and express it to you. As you may know, several folks have written me, emailed me, and any time they put something in writing, I always try and pass it over to the board, I like to know that I'm not a voting member of this board, and that I'll pass along their comments. Several folks have called me and wanted to express an opinion, and even though I told them they should express it to you, they should come here, some folks indicated they couldn't be here. Nevertheless, I thought I would come up and kind of just give you a little bit of a background and a little bit of a sentiment from what I'm hearing from folks in the area. Mr. Bayless, first of all, is a constituent, as you know, Mr. Fleming, I'm sure, drilled home, lives around the corner, I know his partners and the folks involved with him in this venture are also Ward Four residents. And I will say, after the, after the community meeting, Mr. Bayless was very responsive in trying to address the concerns that residents had, you know, he did drop the number of units down by about a third, I think it went from 12 to eight, which is what the current iteration of the plan is. So I want to thank him for that, that's, not every developer does that, but sometimes developers will walk in and they'll see neighbors are against it, and they'll say, "Well, I'll just take my chances anyways." So we appreciate his willingness, I appreciate his willingness to make an attempt to work with the neighbors and to try and address some of their concerns. Now, I wanted to report to you, as I said, the sentiment that's been expressed to me. I've had approximately eight to 10 residents tell me they support the project, and they want to see it approved, they like the design, they believe it will benefit, a benefit to the area that'll refurbish a rundown property. However, I've been contacted by approximately 25 to 30 residents who are opposed. The reasons that those folks had indicated to me that they were opposed to the project was mainly density and the impact that this project would have on traffic. I heard from some director butters who have issues with the driveway and the way in which the driveway is going to be situated. I encourage those folks to reach out to you, and I trust that they will, the ones who are directly negatively impacted, rather than in a larger neighborhood sense. The folks who contacted me against are strongly against, quite frankly, I think it's a frustration that's worn out due to concerns about overdevelopment of the city in general, seeing single-family homes, duplexes, turn into 10, 12, 18 townhouses. We see this, you know, more and more, and as a result, we see more cars on the road, we see more traffic, worse road conditions, and this isn't me up here pointing fingers at you, because this is, you know, the city, we're not, we're not doing, I take my responsibility in this, the city's not doing enough to meet the housing demand that we have in terms of infrastructure. We're not paving the roads at the clip that we used to pave roads at, we're not doing as good of a job as we can do in managing the traffic problems that we have across the city. And that's something that, you know, the mayor, the city council, and the department has to continue to try and improve, but right now, you know, if I had to give us a grade, it wouldn't be a good one in terms of the city, meeting the infrastructure needs for projects like this and other projects of this nature. All this new growth, folks say this to me all the time, all this new growth is supposed to be good for the city, but it never lowers taxes. The taxes keep going up, people get, you know, services that are stagnant or go down. I like to always educate people about how local aid works, and there was an article on the ledger today about how $800,000 got cut out of this budget by the governor's veto for, that was earmarked for Quincy, things that would go towards helping make Quincy a better place, helping ease the traffic burden with the ferry service, but I'll spare you, I'll spare you that diatribe. If I could speak specifically to West Quincy, South Quincy, and Ward Four, I don't know if you guys have provided with a copy of, I don't know if it's a study, it was a map that the planning director did recently, I don't know if you saw it, it was like an oversized map, and it had a location of all the, all the new development going on in the city, and it spanned a couple of months, and this was maybe two, three months ago, that he developed this. There's approximately 4,600 units in development in the city right now, and obviously, being the Ward Four councillor, I care where those units are being developed, so I drew the line on that map of my border, in the area immediately abiding it, and 62% of all of the units being developed in the city right now, being built in the city, are in my ward. We have 60%, is being built in Ward Four. Now, that's because Ward Four is a great place to live, as we all know, but we can't handle the infrastructure. We are having a very difficult time handling that infrastructure, and it's not just the new development which burdens the infrastructure in the area, and again, this isn't Mr. Bayless's fault in any way, but we also, being the gateway to the city, other than perhaps the deposit bridge, you know, we're the way, we're the access point in and out for commuters in the city, in the morning, at night, all day long. So the roads are just, they're just packed, they really are, and so the reason why I'm going down this road with you is to talk about this strong sentiment that I'm hearing from folks, and it's not just this project, it's just about every project that's being proposed in West Quincy right now, in South Quincy. There's a real problem that we're having, with one, the development, and the city not being able to keep up with the demand for development that we're seeing, and we want to encourage growth right now, and that's where it should be. I think less, less so in our neighborhood, development should be occurring downtown, where the infrastructure can support it, and we look what we're doing out here, improvements to public transportation that are being made, and so I'll leave it at that. I think that that's where the frustration and the deep sentiment or resentment against projects like this, projects that are seeking variances are coming from. That's what I've heard from, as I said, the two, two to three dozen folks that reached out to me against this project. I think that's the motivation behind what they're saying, and I think it's, I think it's unfortunate, I don't know that it's come up before you yet, but I think it's unfortunate to talk about this particular parcel is turned to a sober house, if the variance isn't granted tonight, that a sober house would be created there. When I heard that, I called Mr. Bayless, and we had a conversation about it, and it's unfortunate that came up before the zoning board had an opportunity to act on their... It's unfortunate that came up before the zoning board had an opportunity to act on their application. And I'll leave it at that. There's not a lot that the city can do.
Counsel, where'd that come from?
From Mr. Bayless, I understand.
I didn't know that from above.
Yeah, well, I called him when I heard, when residents started calling me about it, I called him. You know, he said that that's, I'm not gonna speak foreign, but I think that's an option that's on the table in his use of this property, which, you know, I told him, and I've told the residents, "We'll cross that bridge when we come to it, but the zoning board has a decision to make before that." So, I feel like it's a city council meeting with how much I'm talking. I'm usually a lot, you know, more brief.
Brief and precise.
Yeah, not this time though, Mr. Chairman. I think John's making me nervous, I've missed him over the past month or so.
This is a lead.
But I'll leave it at that. As I said, eight to 10 residents called me in support of this, and another 25 to 30 called me against, and there are grins for the reasons that I stated, the traffic issues, the density in the driveway. So, I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Seeing that, I have lost all, anyone in favor? All that part of the hearing closed. We got a letter here from the DPW, reviewing above our project. Comments for the planning board, we have no further comments providing his onboard appeals at this time. I think it's previous five. Let's take five minutes and we'll come back, because this is gonna be a little wild in the postside, I see. Why don't we just take five?
How are you? Somebody did. Can I work that for you?
I was on the last year.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So hot, I have a bad memory, so I want to put these up in my head. It's like tired. I don't create new ones, but I always feel like, I've even bought one. But I mean, it's like, they designed to be all.
They're engineer, but they weren't ARs then.
Oh, okay. I mean, they had, this is a good side, they had financing until 2017. Financing, there were all sorts of financing. Whoever I hit, it took me finding, and then we had this big call guy. Had all this stuff. The only thing that happened was, they were like, green meat, you know what I mean? Look at that question. You know, I, huh, is it question? I, I know, they, they had, I said that they used standards and boards. Did you see the big shorts? It's like, you don't have, you know, did you see the big shorts? Did you? Did I see one? The big shorts, no. Or read the book. I just had one, I have no time for reading anything. Have you seen Deep Tha? Yeah. Me, that's funny, I just started watching that, and, oh my God, dude. That's what, you know, you want to know a politics about, didn't he, wasn't it Florida? I want to ask the council where he gets the 62%. I mean, I'm gonna call Milwaukee, I think he's using Ford Street.
Anyone opposed or undecided? I suppose there's a lot, so if we can just line up, please answer the person in front of you. Don't try to repeat the same stuff if you could. But if you hear the name and address when you come up in.
Good evening. My name is Adam from Whitford Lane, which is right across the street from where this property is.
What's his name?
Maderas, E R O S. So, I, as a resident, I've been living there for over 11 years, and I'm concerned with my wife and my two kids about this. And once again, it has to come down to, once again, it's the construction. If people have been on West Street and Willard Street, you know how bad those streets are. Now, we're gonna rip up this to do some sort of construction. We're not paving these streets. I don't know when the last time West and Willard have been paved. And as well as, if we're looking at the amount of construction vehicles that has to do this particular house, that's a lot of equipment. We're not talking just like a small old truck. You have to demo this, it's extremely a lot of noise, and I think that's just unhealthy for this neighborhood. As well as, you know, you're talking about this home, it costs a lot of money to maybe, you know, rehab and all that stuff. But I'm just looking at, look how much money you just spent on this lovely engineering firm that you had, and all this nice, you know, eight-by-ten glossy photos and, you know, the drawings and all that stuff. I mean, you've really done a nice job of made it a nice two-family home in which I think would help make it a better neighborhood. It's a very nice, if a lot of families live near there, and I think there would be a better use of that particular property. And I agree, I think also too, if we're doing some serious construction, I'm concerned about, you know, what's gonna happen. I mean, if they're gonna hit rocks, there's a lot of granite there, you know, there have to be, you know, is there gonna be a dynamite? I don't know, and that could be a big possibility. And once again, that's, I think, would be, you know, concern to maybe the water table. There is a well, not more than, I believe, 200 feet to the left of that particular property. So, those are some of my concerns, and I think that, you know, once again, we're just, once again, we're building way too much in this particular area of West Quincy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike Ganepin, 25, Trask Ave., again, thank you very much. They kept on talking about how dense, you know, this could be and everything. We have apartment buildings on West Street, up on Slagger. I mean, when is enough? I feel I'm totally against this project. If you buy a single family, I think you should stick to a single family. Buy a double family, stick to the double family. You can renovate it, flip it, make money, short money, it's not as much as money as you probably want to make, you know. But I mean, how much is enough, like I keep saying? As far as the construction goes, to my right, I live on 25 Trask Ave., a simple little, simple project, it's a single family, they tore the roof off, went up, looks beautiful. You know, I had no problems with it. I got a two-year-old and a one-year-old. You know, if anyone has kids here, they have naptime, and there's been nothing but, you know, drilling and smashing and banging all day long, you know, Monday through Saturday, sometimes on Sunday. But my main concern is, is you got eight units coming from the two, you know, two-family. Eight units, that's eight cars, you know, times two. Every family around in Quincy knows if you live in a house, you can afford a house, you have two cars. And 16 cars, you want to talk about, is a simple in-and-out on that, you know, one car can pass one car, in-and-out, no problem. I doubt that, I highly doubt that, because coming up on Slagger, coming down on Trask Ave., they turned it into a one-way in the wintertime. Everyone knows when, you know, everyone's out here shoveling, there's tons of snow. It's just, where are you gonna put all the snow? You gonna dump it in your neighbor's yard? I mean, do you have a dumping spot for all the snow? Take it with you? Where are all these construction trucks and cars, everyone that's gonna come work on this site? Where they gonna park? Do you have enough parking on the site? Because in front of my house, to my right, we got a house that's going up one floor. I got 12 cars out there every single day, 12 extra cars, just for a single little one-floor going up on a single family. What's gonna happen with eight units? I mean, to me, you're telling me that there's gonna be, I mean, if these guys next to me can't carpool, I don't know if they don't like each other or what, but if they can't carpool, what is this gonna be like? I mean, do they have an agreement with Shere Rank, the ice rink up the street, the parking they want? I mean, does anyone have any of these answers on, you know, to provide for the, all these neighbors are here away from their families tonight, because obviously, we're against this project. I think basically what I'm getting at, if you buy a two-family, do whatever you want with it, just keep it a two-family. That's what I really would appreciate if you just stuck to that, because to my left, I had a house that just sold. It was sold as a two-family slash two-lot. They're gonna be doing the same thing this guy wants to do. And I'm just getting done with my two young kids listening to this noise all day. Soon as they're done, this guy's gonna, they got a one-year lease over here, they're gonna be ripping that down and doing the same thing. I mean, when is enough? How much can you possibly build? You're quadrupling the amount of water you use, the sewage, you know, the rubbish, huge, you know what I mean? This is all our tax money. All our money goes towards this stuff. I just, I don't know, I mean, I could sit up here for hours, we all want to get out of here. I just, I totally opposed to it, I'm against it, I hate it, and that's, I just want to make sure I say that nice and clear. Thank you very much for having me.
When you call them 252, 254 West Street, I approach the venue. When this is a letter, it turned me to the last council meeting, it was supposed to. I thought this was so exciting. Sorry, try, we just chat a little bit.
Could you pick up the time?
Sure. First time I've done this, so. My name is Steve Conley, and I own 252, 254 West Street. I purchased this property in 2003 from Ruth Jones, the city nurse. My property directly abuts this project. At the last meeting, I submitted the letter you have in front of you for my opposition of the project. My issues with the amount of units in a 28,000-square-foot lot and how it would adversely affect the neighborhood. The number-one concern I had at the time when I wrote that letter a couple of months ago was parking. You have eight units and five test spaces. Are you telling me on Super Bowl Sunday that those overflow of cars, when people have them over, aren't gonna end up on West Street? It's highlighted in the letter I wrote. Snow removal was another one, and obviously, the impact of traffic, headlights on the neighbors across the street. During the construction, drainage is also a major concern, the grade is higher than my house. As you said, there's nothing in there now. Where is that water gonna go? There was an old well, I guess, according to Ruth Jones, that is on that property. What is gonna happen to the water that's underneath that, I'm not sure. It is my understanding that the issue tonight is an application for a hardship. And again, I'm a layman, this is all new to me, learned in the last couple of days. A hardship is granted for three reasons: land shape, topography, and soil conditions, which are none of the project's issues. In the last 48 hours, my concern went from what's best for the neighborhood to personal, and that's why I'm here tonight. Approximately one year ago, Mr. Bayless approached me and offered to purchase six feet of my property for $15,000. I declined his offer. I've had several conversations with Mr. Bayless about the project since that time. These conversations including putting up fences, bushes for the neighbors to make the project a little better. On Sunday, a neighbor contacted me, asked me if I had seen the survey markers on my property. I had asked him what a survey marker was, I didn't know. One of the survey nails was in the center of my driveway. You can see some of the pictures, right off the bulkhead, about seven feet from my house. So, after the neighbor explained to me what they were and what that meant, I called Mr. Bayless. Mr. Bayless told me, quote, "You know, the property line's a property line, there's nothing I can do. I need that land." So, basically, those nails indicate that what the attorney didn't tell you is he's saying that that property line is gonna cut out half of my driveway, adversely affecting the value of my house. And he's gonna build a road, or I'm not even sure what he's gonna do.
Which property is that?
That's, I believe that's mine.
Oh.
That driveway is mine.
This driveway?
No.
This one?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
With the iron in it, this is my driveway.
And where are you saying, where's the nails? I don't see no nails there.
Yeah, I don't think I have a bigger camera. Right off the bulkhead, in the middle of the driveway. He's saying that that is his property. I disagree vehemently. I spoke with the former owner of the house, Ruth Jones. She stated she purchased the house in 1980. Ruth Jones further stated that when she purchased the house from Viola O'Brien, whether that is, in 1980, the driveway existed exactly as it's represented today. I purchased the house in 2003, so that's 13 years. Insulting an attorney, which I plan to retain, that's called adverse possession, and tacking on those two years, well beyond 20 years. There's an irrigation system in the strip of grass you can see right along here, Ruth Jones put in. That irrigation runs every night. I pay for the water that comes out of that. I have for 13 years, Ruth Jones did it for many years prior to me. There's a tree at the front of the property on one of those pictures. Apparently, that tree's gonna be either dead or taken down, according to Mr. Bayless's plan. The attorney never mentioned any of that. A right-of-way exists for the property Mr. Lamb owns, but constitute a narrow right-of-way for access for a 19th-century home, very old home, and has no frontage. It is not built for a multi-unit project, and it seems like a complete overreach. I believe this project is nothing more than greed, attempting to force the most amount of condos in the smallest amount of space to make the most amount of money. And what cost, the cost is to me, Mr. Lamb, Ed McDonough, all the other budding neighbors, while Mr. Bayless makes money. He's taking away from my property. At minimum, I have a property line dispute, at the very minimum. I have also hired a surveyor. The surveyor looked at some of the maps from the 1800s, the house is pretty old. He's already located discrepancy. And obviously, this just happened Sunday, so we need a little bit more time before the full survey results. But thank you very much. I vehemently oppose the, thank, the project. Obviously, this is, in my opinion, my property, and he is approaching mine.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Frank Camerata, and I live directly across the street from this proposed project. And I am dead-set against this for a number of reasons, and I'm hoping that this zoning board of appeals will have, will listen to what the city council member has stated, as well as the vast number of people here that are in opposition to this project. And I come to you in a very respectful manner. I would like to point out that while some of the people that were in favor of this, hi, Mr. Ray. I was wondering, just if I could for one second, totally unrelated to this, could I speak with you for 10 minutes, perhaps, after this meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ray. As I was saying, a number of people, and there weren't a large number, that spoke in favor of this project. It should be pointed out, and I think rightfully so, that they are either working for the city or they are related to the owners. Now, there was a gentleman over here who made a compliment. I noticed that most of the people, I think there were three people that spoke in favor of it, and I noticed that they're gone, which is neither here nor there. But this gentleman on Weston Ave. says, "Well, I'm up high," he says, "and it doesn't really affect me." Well, that's very interesting, because I live directly across from the, as does the Foyds and other homeowners, and I'm low in west, and I don't want to get any wetter. I would also like to present to you respectfully that the lawyer or the attorney for the proposed developer throughout this parking, 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 and although that did come up, and I don't want to totally diminish that, that's a red herring, okay? Because the main problem there is the traffic. You also had that one out of the three people that spoke in favor of this say, "Well, I drive by there six or eight times a day." Well, and it's not that other than the last week when they were doing a little renovation on the street, okay? Well, I live there 24/7, and I've lived in this location for over 20 years, and I've been a resident of Quincy for 60 years. And the traffic from Willard Street down, you're gonna hear plenty tonight, so I don't want to take all of the thoughts away from other people. I go between seven, I'm having some construction work done. You try to get out of the driveway, starting down past to, you're gonna hear another resident speak, three blocks away. resident speak, three blocks away, five days a week, between 7:00 and 8:30 in the morning, and you try to come up West Street and go up to Willard Street between 4:00 and 5:45, and you will see traffic, and you, it'll be a lot different impression than someone who got up here, who doesn't live on the street, and says, "I travel by there six or eight times a day." Okay? Traffic is a major, major concern. I'm also concerned about the water naturally. But I'm also concerned, and my neighbors is concerned to the point she couldn't come tonight, that with this skinny driveway that they allegedly are going to expand by some miraculous powers, comes directly down, and those headlights are going to shine directly into our windows. And my neighbor said, "If this was ever approved," and hopefully, with all respect, it won't be, she's putting up a big, big mirror in her window. Now, yeah, so it will shine right back into their face. There's a reason why this project is before the zoning board of appeals. And the reason why is because they're trying to use this in a particular way that's not allowable under the regular business procedures, the business owner, what have you. I would like to say very respectfully to you people that there is no hardship. The only hardship here, this was bought as a two-family home. The only hardship here is this proposed pie-in-the-sky financial hardship for someone who wants to make a buck off the property at my expense and all of these residents' expense. And it's just not right. We come to you, I come to you with respect and ask you to please do the right thing, stick up for the residents. More residents by far are in disfavor of this. And I humbly and respectfully ask you to consider my thoughts very much. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Renee Chikowski. I live at 6 Wickford Lane. My house is on the corner of Wickford Lane and West Street. I'm approximately five to six houses down on the opposite side of this proposed project. Mr. Akins had said, "Try not to say the same thing as the neighbors." So far, I think the neighbors have covered a lot of my thoughts that I had. A lot was the traffic. Recently, I had family from out of state and who lives in a very large metropolitan area and all the traffic, and said, "What's going on on the street?" And I said, "Oh, that's a daily occurrence. I can't get out of my street. I live on 6 Wickford Lane, not even a West Street address, and I cannot get out at 7:00 to 8:30, 9:00 in the morning. Or I sit there, and I've timed it sometimes up to 10 minutes if somebody will let me get out." So, traffic is a huge issue. If this driveway, originally, it sounded like it was going to be one width, I don't know where it's going to go, by two, but if the traffic is so backed up both ways on West Street, and somebody's trying to go up the driveway and come down the driveway, and it's going to happen, when will they get out, just like when do I get out of my street? But in addition to all of those, people talked about, "If I had a two-family, you know it's a two-family, then do something with the two-family. I bought a single-family outside of the city. We're renovating it, we're keeping it a single-family. Stop coming to the zoning board and looking for an appeal for every piece of property that somebody buys to make the buck. I'm going to make a buck. I didn't ask for three or five townhouses in the area I'm building and renovating in." In addition to that, Mr. Akins made some good points on the Lawler case, and I think the thoughts he said, as well as what Mr. Riddell and Mr. Calmucci said, also should apply to this. Mr. Akins had to wait to get down the street of Davis because of all the parking. Well, I have to reiterate, wait to get on my street because of the traffic. You say, Mr. Akins, "It wasn't fair to the neighborhood to add that master bedroom on." Well, it's not fair to us and our property values and our lifestyle that we currently live there. And Mr. Riddell and Mr. Calmucci, there's a whole issue with parking, the city doesn't deal with it. There's a whole issue with overdeveloping, the city hasn't dealt with it. I'm not saying again it's any of your fault, but, Mr. Akins said, "Do we exasperate that problem? Do we increase it by giving Mr. Bayless what he wants to make the almighty dollar and make everyone else upset?" I'm not going to continue on, because a lot has reiterated, and there's a lot of neighbors waiting to speak, but it affects a lot of people. And Attorney Fleming, every other sentence he presented was the concern by the neighbors, while we worked with that, the concern by the neighbors. That alone should tell you, there's a lot of concerns by the neighbors, and anything looks great on paper, but when it comes to actuality, it'll be a lot worse. Thank you, and I oppose the project.
Thanks.
So, Allison Mosicoff, 227 West Street, and she lives next to Renee. I also oppose this project for many of the same reasons, traffic being a huge one, but also for overdevelopment and setting precedents on this lot. Eight, almost eight years ago, a similar situation occurred across the street from me, in which she was trying to develop. I don't remember the specifics, but it was one house, one family wanted to build many units, maybe seven or eight, that was shot down. But my fear is that should this get approved, there are several deep lots on West Street on the other side of, across from me, that I fear that should this be approved, setting precedent, and then the next one will get approved, and the next one. And it will no longer be a street of single and two-family houses, it'll be a street of townhouses or condos, much like a main street like Willard or any of the busy, you know, main streets. It'll take away the character of the neighborhood. You know, there are a lot of people with young families and young kids, which I have, cars flying by, I have to, you know, make them promise me they'll hug the fence if they're going to take a walk to a neighbor's house, you know, they can't play outside, the cars speeding by, they're likely to get hit, they have to stay in the backyard. I just, I'm afraid that it's taking away from the character of the neighborhood. It's going to be too much development, you're not going to have, you're not going to know your neighbors. It's nice actually, see even more of my neighbors out here tonight. So it's precedent, it's traffic, parking, yes, the overflow of the snow in the winter, where's that going to go that's going to create more of a parking issue? And I just feel like the argument that there are already apartment buildings and condos in the area, I don't think that that is a good reason to just keep building more. I think we should try to clean up West Street, make it look nice, not crowded, and add to the traffic problems and the parking problems, et cetera. So I oppose it, and I sincerely as well, you take into consideration the worst of the time coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen McClellan. I live at 18 Trask Avenue, just off of West Street. And at the risk of being overly repetitive, since everyone has already voiced so many of my concerns, I think I would just like to reiterate just a handful of things. I think it is the challenges with the traffic. There's far too much traffic, as we experience on a day-in, day-out basis. It's not an exaggeration when we say it takes 10, sometimes 15 minutes to get out of the street, just to go to work in the morning or come home. When I took my right-hand turn onto West Street at the traffic light near Shea Ray, there were 28 cars waiting at the light. It's just, it's insane, the traffic levels. I have a five-and-a-half-year-old, I'm terrified to let her out. Where is she going to ride her bike? I can't let her off the street. And, you know, we, a lot of us have young kids, and we, it's a family neighborhood. If there's single-family homes or two-family homes, we respectfully request that they remain in that way. Invest in the property, you know, this is a lovely parcel of property. Put two beautiful $600,000 or $700,000 homes, there you go, you'll make some cash that way. I think there's an opportunity to make money from the investment that doesn't negatively impact the neighborhood. But again, I think another key point is just that this continues to set precedent. If we say yes to this project, why would we say no to another one? And as Mike, who was up here earlier, mentioned, you know, there was a two-family home that was purchased with a secondary parcel of land that they now, again, the rumors are that they want to build condos, it's directly across from my home. They have no desire for any additional units in the neighborhood. There is plenty of housing in our neighborhood and all throughout Quincy. So, again, as with everyone else here tonight that is against the project, my husband and I are against the project, and I respectfully request that you do not. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Jimmy Daltman of 191 West Street. I go along with everyone here that I strongly go against this project. I think if they build this condo, there's condos up the street there, they're not condos that people live in, they're just investments for somebody, it's a step in stone for someone to save their money to go buy a house in Braintree or Milton. They're just staying in Quincy just to be here temporarily, there's no, doesn't solidify them for staying here, they're just, it's just like I said, a step in stone. One other thing is, everyone strongly mentions the traffic. I got videotaped, I sit there in the afternoon, I don't know how to get to you guys, I don't know Bill Gates, but I can show you this thing, where traffic, I live three blocks down, and when I say I got to get out to a guy who's in front of my driveway, and he tells me, "F off," trying to get out, I think that's ridiculous, that's absurd. I live there, this guy's just cutting through.
They all cut through.
Sixteen more cars coming through, it's going to get worse. And I strongly, again, ask the board that you vote this proposal down.
Thank you, Mr. Daltman.
Thank you.
Can I just show you a picture you had asked about the marker? That's the marker in his driveway, and that is his bulkhead. If you go, that shows you what the edge of the...
I got it right here.
Yep. Ahmed McDonough, I live at 3/15 Schlagerrath. Again, I'm going to skip some, most of my stuff that has been said before. This unit is setback. It's off a right-of-way. There is no frontage. So technically, by zoning, they can't build anything. That's my understanding. Now, I live directly behind where he wants to put four-unit, three-story. My house is 17 and 1/2 feet off the property line, he wants to put it 15. According to my records, the zoning from Quincy, he should be 25 feet back. So he's making the driveway and entrance to his property nice and easy and convenient, and he's making, "I'm going to have a wall in the back of my house where my bedrooms are, and it goes a total way." What is that going to do to my property value? That's going to drop down my property cost, and that affects me. Now, it's my understanding, eight or nine years ago, zoning in Quincy got changed to stop projects like this. You know, I'm not against projects, but he's doubled the size of the square footage that he's supposed to be putting in. I'd like to read this, I got this off the internet, because he is building this off of a right-of-way, a right-of-way that he does not own. The next person coming up owns a right-of-way. "A right-of-way in easement, a privileged passover land of another, where the holder of the easement acquires only reasonable and usual enjoyment of the property." This right-of-way was for a driveway, not a roadway. I don't understand how he's going to get permission from somebody who's opposing this project to dig up that, his property and put utilities in. That's just my saying on that. Roadway safety, he has a design of, his roadway is 16 feet, and it shows two cars clearly passing, and it actually shows two pickups. Now, I'm in the development business. Parking spaces, normal parking spaces are nine feet wide. So nine and nine is 18. So he's two feet shy of parking spaces, and he's showing two pickup trucks. I'm sure that that design is on two compact cars and not as shown on the drawings. As his property shows, he is just shy of that tree on the first of Butters' property. He's going to dig, he's going to dig it probably about four feet away from the root ball, that tree's dead. And it's my understanding, there's been no discussion on what's going to happen to that tree on that property. Designed for a fire truck, I get a scale based on a fire truck, average fire truck's eight feet wide. It shows he's going to be going into oncoming traffic to make that swing. So that's my hearing today.
Thank you, Mr. Akins.
Hi, I'm the Chen Lenz, I live at 264 West Street.
What's your name?
Chen, C-H-E-N.
Chen.
Chen, yeah, Lenz, 264 West Street. My house is in front of this development. I just want to add one more thing. The council are talking about the 10-unit apartment building next to 264, which was built a long time ago. Has not much traffic, the population's not that many. And also, during the weekend, there's a park, the parking lot of the apartment building. I don't want another park there behind my house. Yeah. And also, I'm suspect, this is my, I'm suspect, he may still try to steal my land to build the driveway. So this is why I'm strongly opposed to this project.
Where do you live?
264, I live right here. The house is right here, yeah. The house is right here. And on the next page, you can see what is the marker on the land. I'm strongly opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donald Gordon, 22 Schlagerrath. And I'd like to go on the record as being opposed to the project the way it stands. I would like to make reference, though, to another project, which is about 50 or so yards from this proposed project, which was, Willard Street had a horse stable that a developer, I think, did a nice job building a couple of decent-sized houses on the property. That's something that I think that I would be in support of, but I think this currently has just too much collateral damage to the neighborhood as it stands. So I would like to...
Thank you.
My name is Frank Sutter, I live at 29 Trask Avenue. We moved to Quincy a year and a half ago. Part of what I liked about West Quincy was, it is the single-family home, two-family home, it's a very charming neighborhood, and it's what attracted us to the area. We live, the house is in construction, not that, the first guy that spoke was from plenty of all the construction vehicles. We put $200,000 into the house, because we too had 6 and 1/2-foot ceilings. Part of the intro that we heard about the plans was the charming 100-year-old house, and we thought about trying to make it possible, and it is possible, it just costs a bit of money, and we can keep the original charm and authenticity of it. So there was something disingenuous to go from, how can we renovate this 100-year-old house, to let's put up 11 or 12 condos. It's quite an extreme change of thought process. So we've invested a lot in the area. You know, we did put a second story on the house, and we did raise, increase our 6 and 1/2-foot ceilings to 8-foot ceilings, and...
Why are you having a battle?
Everyone's welcome to come over. Nice kitchen. So I do oppose it, it's just something that doesn't seem sincere about much of it, and of course, many of the concerns everyone else brought up, I also have to, so thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Chu, I live in 263 West Street, just wide rows from the project. I know everybody's tired, I'm tired too, because this is the third time I've been in this meeting, but this matter is completely out of control. Everything the labor already said.
First time you've been here on this one.
Okay, tonight.
Thank you.
All right. I'm just sick and tired of listening for the developer saying, "How old's the house? 6.5 foot clearance." Did they know that? When they bought the house, I'm sure they knew that, because they didn't see that. Why? Because they got $2 aside in their eyes. They bought the house less than half a million. They turned the project into a 3.5 million, and then they took the profit. What left for us? Trouble. Thank you for mentioning the 10 apartment building. I called the cops every other month, because what? What was trouble? More people means more trouble, that's common sense. Who said the three-bedroom unit only had two cars? Who said that? Me and my wife and two young kids, I have four cars. I found my driveway. Three, 2.6 parking space is not for West Street. It's for some unit with a side street. You can park on the side street, but West Street is a double yellow line in the middle, 30 miles or so, people driving 60 miles an hour. That's what happened in West Street. I don't think the two, that parking space, you have a housewarming party, they're going to park on the side of the street. I'm going to call the cops, I'm going to tell everybody. That's what happened. I don't want to raise anyone. Any more thanks. So please, turn this down.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough.
John Orfels, 62 Ground Wall Road. I just want to point out to the map, when they gave this right-of-way right here, that was for one house. It wasn't granted for eight different houses. That's basically why an eight-unit is supposed to be there. When I came here for this meeting tonight, coming down Dimick Street, trying to take a right on the Hancock Street, for three lights in a row, the buses, no one could take a right. I had to get into that left lane and then go through a red light to take a right and cut all traffic off so I could take this meeting and be here on time.
Service, you know.
So my main concern is for the taxpayers of Quincy. I don't want anyone having a stroke, or getting upset, or losing any sleep over people trying to make some money or development. Mr. Fleming, you could help us by...
Hey, hey, Renee, hey, up here.
Well, I'm just saying, the main points is, well, I mean, I have, I have reorganized the Quincy Taxpayers Association, and it's because these people are representing the mayor of Quincy. The mayor of Quincy appoints all these people, and their decisions reflect the current administration. They make decisions up here that sometimes don't make the best of sense to the taxpayers who have been there their whole lives. And it's about, last meeting, I said, you know, that was the worst decision. I think that the project on Parker Street is worse than this, so this won't be your worst decision if you say yes. But I see those same looks on your faces right now that this might get approved. Please do not approve this, the whole neighborhood has come out, and it even sounded like Council Palmuji was against this project. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? Second call?
I'm sorry, can I just make one more comment?
In one minute.
Sorry.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak that hasn't spoken? You may speak, man, please come up and address me.
Sorry, and I should have mentioned this one. Again, Karen McClellan, 18 Trask Avenue. The other thing I would like to just make a statement that Mr. Palmuji stated earlier, that the rumor going around about if this project doesn't get approved, that there would be a sober house put in, I think is abhorrent. I think it is absolutely disgraceful to try and use that as leverage, to try, instead of having 11, we move to eight. But if we don't get eight, then we want to put a sober house in. That's like a petulant child. And I think it's disgraceful to threaten the neighborhood with something like that. Thank you.
Last call, anyone like to speak this time?
I live at 16 Montoya Street, where Tom is working with the project.
Name and address, please. Our name?
Tom Solomon.
Solomon, you have the floor, please.
And as everybody said tonight, is the traffic a problem? Really bad. And then, you know, west, 10 months, it's got worse. Now we have BU buses from Boston University coming up from the Rotary, right by, you know, West Street and right up Wilbert Street. And what they're doing, they're coming off the Rotary and going up the back way to Blue Hills and cutting in through the Shea Park and coming down my street, and because they beat the traffic, because it backed up from the lights at Wilbert Street. West Street and Wilbert Street, the MBTA buses come down there and they stop right at this project. They're going to stop right at that project. And what else we're doing is we have the double pole, the electrical on the street. Now, what's, are they going to do that there at the port of this project? You tell me. And the other thing, you can't get a wheelchair, I'm telling you, a wheelchair past these poles. Now that's against the law. The disability. I can't take a wheelchair down West Street because of those poles, and it's going to be right near that project. So I'm totally against this. Yeah, I'm for everybody making money. It's a nice little community here. They're all single-family homes. There's kids and children. And the thing is, if they're coming up our side streets, somebody's going to get run over. And Wilbert Street is known to kill people right on Buggy Hill, Wilbert Street. So...
And sad part is, everyone that comes through here don't live there. That's the worst part of the whole situation. It's ridiculous.
I'm a retired guy now, and I sit at my doorstep for my little dog, and as I can see, I'm almost totally dead. And I come up the back road there from Blue Hills, and they cut them down the Rotary there. And I've almost got killed twice at Wilson for my little dog. So, no, I'm totally against the project, and I hope you help me get this through.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Last call, anyone ever like to speak that hasn't spoken? Second call, please come up.
I just wanted, my name is Matt Bederas, I'm from Wickwood Lane, as I said, ripped out from where this project is. And I was here earlier for the part of the meeting, and Mr. Chair, you mentioned, you said you were watching out for the city of Quincy. So I pleaded, I begged for the members of the board to watch out for the residents of this area, of our ward. I'm sure if a project like this and maybe a sober house next door to you, I'm sure you'd be angry, and you wouldn't be happy either if this was building in your backyard. And this is what's going to happen to us.
Mark that.
Right. So, once again, I ask we're completely opposed to this, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else last call? Call a part of the hearing closed. You know, this is, Council, you're going in front of tomorrow night, you have planning?
Play.
I wish you went there first before you came in and had that finished, but what's going on with the property lines here? Because people are saying that the property lines, I mean, I'm not against development. If you're 28,000 feet personally, have we taken someone's driveway away from them, or not?
I'm not familiar exactly with the property line.
This guy says half his driveway is going...
That might very well be the case. I mean, it, please understand, that's actually, he's actually on, the property's owned by the party in the front.
That's what I'm asking, is that right property line? I mean, that looks like it's 30, 30 feet.
It's a land. That's his property, so this, the gentleman next door is actually on his property. The right-of-way is a 20-foot right-of-way that runs along that area. I think what Mr. Bayless did with his surveyors is to mark that so that it could be clearly identified as to where the driveway could be created. So yes, if that's where the property line is, that's where the development of the driveway will...
I think that should be all cleared up first, so we know...
But, yeah, and certainly, I talked to Mr. Bayless about this, and we'd certainly reach out to Mr. Conley. If Mr. Conley has some concerns about the property line, it has retained a surveyor to determine that. Well, certainly, Mr. Bayless will certainly work in cooperation with him. And remember, on that side of the property as well, on each side of the property line, there was a two-foot planting bed that was going to be created on both sides of the driveway. So if that two-feet planting bed is eliminated, we could, in our negotiations with Mr. Conley, we can preserve more of his driveway. We don't, I don't think Mr. Bayless would have a problem with him using that two-foot. There's ways in which we can negotiate with Mr. Conley about that. We certainly don't want, we want to have a, I know that Mr. Bayless has made significant efforts in trying to work with Mr. Conley and trying to address some of the concerns that he's raised, and talked about fencing. They've had an open line of communication about a number of things. We'll certainly continue to talk with him about it.
I mean, a guy buys a house, he's got a driveway, and he thinks he owns the driveway, and all of a sudden he finds out it's not his, and now he's got parking that he don't have. I think that should have been squared away before we even came here.
It should have been noted on his plot...
Someone should have figured out where people park.
Well, it shouldn't have been noted on his plot plan when he bought his house.
Somebody, right. Something should have been squared away.
I mean, there's a number of property line disputes, they go on throughout all the countries, so...
And I'm not saying, I'm just saying, all of a sudden, this guy throws a fence up there, the guy loses his driveway, which means they're running by the ether, that's the parking area between you and you know it is his. And it's just, I think something should have been worked out with the neighborhood before we sat here and know that. I don't remember the front of his house, how many space that he has on his front of his house. Is that an extra driveway inside?
Yeah.
I think to come in like this and go, because I forget, you know, it's the other day, too, it looks like.
Steve, is it okay?
Yeah, please.
I'm Steve Bayless, I think everybody knows who I am. I did approach Mr. Conley, because on the, originally we bought it from the map geo, it appeared that it wasn't 20 feet. So I approached him at that point, because I figured the house wasn't really worth renovating. I approached him to see if I could buy a piece of land from him, so I did have a conversation.
Now, I get that.
He has another driveway on the other side of the house, that is his second driveway in parking area. That's his second one, so he has a duplex. That one looks like it's a two-family, he has parking on both sides of the houses. I also spoke with him yesterday, is he going to attest to try to work with him, like Mr. Fleming said. I'm not looking to disrupt anybody.
And I see the way he comes in here and what's going to happen there, but I think you two, really, you figure that out in a week and a half. What's in that community?
Two weeks.
Two weeks? Can you two sit down and try to figure something out?
Can I also leave to the sober house thing that people have been talking about?
Yeah, because that really bothers us, it really does.
When we started, it was never, never my intention to do a sober house, and still is not my intention to do a sober house, okay? If this gets denied, I have to look at every option that's available. The conversation that I had was that somebody's going to come in and buy the house. The only thing that that house is good for is that situation or this situation. I invite any of yous to come meet me there, I'll walk you through the house, and now you're all saying we should renovate the house, we should raise the ceiling heights. Open invite, anybody who wants to come and look at it. That house...
We want to be the office.
But this is a 29,000 square foot lot.
We're seeing it open debate, Council.
A 29,000 square foot lot.
Somebody just explained, no back and forth, please. We don't have time.
That was never my intention.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, please, please. Bayless, you have the floor.
It is not my intention now, it never has been my intention. I bought this property a year ago. I would not be standing here in front of you right now if that was my intention, because that is a by right thing that can be done. I would not be standing here a year later. So it's not my intention, I want to get that straight.
Certainly work with Mr. Conley.
Can we do something and then come back in two weeks and we'll rehearse what you're going to do for a driveway here or what, and how that's going to work out, maybe, if you're taking someone's driveway.
Absolutely.
It's like, no matter what happens back there, figure out what we're doing for a driveway. Where the parking is going to go and how that works, and if you don't come up with something, that's fine.
Thank you.
Then we got to make a decision, but something's got to be done, you know? I mean, the poor guy's parking on that, he's got a duplex, he wants people to park on both sides. Now what are you going to do, put them in the street? That's not fair to help it. You have a motion to come back for 26, please. You'll deal with the neighborhood and we'll have some more conversation at that time. The testimony has been...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we got a case number 16-047, West Street Properties LLC, for a variance finding to remove the existing two-family home and replace with eight townhouse-style units on the premises numbered R264 West Street Quincy. I'd like to make a motion to have the meeting come back to 26, July 26.
Second? Second. On the motion, seeing that, all in favor? No, no move.
Thank you.